Mayor.
Right, thank you. I believe it is Commissioner Cessna's turn to do the pledge allegiance and invocation in just a second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you have provided us at the beginning of this new year. We ask that you guide us and grant us wisdom during our meeting to move our community forward in a positive direction. Be with all of our citizens in this community, but especially be with our first responders along with those that are other frontline staff as they continue to care for our community. Watch over them and keep them all safe. Thank you for the recent moisture that we have so desperately needed, and we ask that you provide us more to help nourish our lands. We thank you for your continued blessings, not only our community, but state as well as nation. And as we pray, amen.
All right, we move on to approval of the minutes. And was there any changes to those?
I didn't see any changes that looked good. Mayor?
Seeing none, they will stand as approved. Okay, public comic time. This is a time that we have to give the public to come up and bring up any topics or discuss any things that are not already on the agenda. We have 30 minutes, a lot for this, and please do not spend more than five minutes per spokesperson. Is anybody from the public?
Yes.
Vicki, come on up and make sure you state your name. And Lance, so.
Yes.
All right.
I'm Lance Rupp.
I'm Vicki Gurman. We're representing the Southwest Kansas Builders Association today.
We're here to invite you to our breakfast next Monday. We're honored to have National Association of Home Builders past Chairman of the Board traveling from Connecticut to Garden City to speak. We're also going to have the current Vice Chairman there in attendance, and we're really excited about it. The NAHB is an organization of 150,000 members that has support for the building industry. We've really decided to tap into the resources they have, and so we're hoping that some of you can attend if you want to impress them with what Garden City has to offer. We're going to take the past chairman around town Sunday afternoon and show them what we have and what we have to offer. So hopefully you want to be able to attend. If you want RSVP, let Sharon know or go on involved.
All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
I feel like you're all aware, we're like kind of impressing them. We are getting two awards for growing.
Wow, congratulations.
Good to see you guys.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, no petition, no petitions, so we'll move on to report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Quinde, who's my counterpart for the city of Russell, Kansas, sent a letter expressing his appreciation and as well as the appreciation of his governing body and the community for the mutual aid service provided to Russell by the Garden City Electric Department following the high wind event that came through the western part of the state a couple weeks ago. So, Mike, I don't know if you wanted to talk a little bit more about the contributions of our electric department to the mutual aid that we sent off to Russell.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The storm event that come through here that blew so hard that New Year's had like eight cold winters and some, we had some damage, but not the major. The city of Russell had considerable damage. They put out their request for mutual aid. We responded along with a couple of other public power communities. We sent a three-man crew with a deer berry, get a bucket truck and a pickup truck, and then we also have a trailer that we take with us when we do those things so that the lineman will have all of their safety gear. You know, in the event that something would happen, gloves got torn up, they have new stuff there. Anyway, they spent two days helping them restore power to some of their citizens, and they were very grateful for the, for the, for the help. So, we were happy to help.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, and we're certainly proud of the response that the department and all the city employees gave during the wind event here in Garden City as well. Items B and C are monthly reports. If you have questions on those, we would be glad to try to answer them.
Just like to echo what the mayor said in his speech about the record-setting number on the sales tax. It was just very impressive when I received the report showing that our community continues to grow and be an economic powerhouse in this region.
I agree.
Do you agree with your own comment?
That's pretty good.
I like the flourish of the economic powerhouse and stuff like that.
Yeah, what he said, but he agrees, that he agreed with himself. Okay.
Meetings of note, if any of those require an RSVP, please get with Selin.
Right, so on the appropriation ordinance?
Yeah, and if the commission would like to adopt this ordinance, it would be number 2546-2022A.
I make a motion, we approve appropriation ordinance number 2546-2022A.
This motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to mention that going through the ordinance, they've added additional comments on the side, and it really does help give you an understanding of what's, what, you know, some of the pri, you know, it gives a little better explanation. So I kind of like, you know, those little additional comments that you guys have been adding to that. Helps me understand it better.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from R1, Single Family Residential, to C2, General Commercial District for the properties generally located at 1502 North Campus Drive and 2301 East Kansas Avenue, Garden City. And if approved, this would be ordinance number?
Hold one moment.
Yeah, we can catch up with that after the presentation. Okay, 2922. 2922-2022.
Twenty-two, yes.
Trent?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
So, to give you a little background on this, this is the property generally located at 1502 North Campus and 2301 East Kansas Avenue. The applicant is SMH Consultants, and they're requesting to rezone two properties from the R1, Single Family Residential District to the C2, General Commercial District. This property is under design and the plans for redevelopment, so we're excited about that. Staff analysis on this, the proposed use of property as commercial is consistent with the confidence of plan/future land use. The proposed site will be developed with a mixed commercial usefulness. The governing body may approve the request according to criteria in 27.40 below some of those criteria items. The planning commission didn't meet on this. Their recommendation of approval, eight were present, eight voted in favor. The alternatives, alternative number one, the governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Alternative number two, the governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-three majority vote. And alternative number three, the governing body will return the recommendation of the planning commission to statements specifying the basis of the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. We, as staff, recommend alternative number one. Any questions? So we have to answer?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2922-2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
No, I'm glad to see this moving forward. I was excited when I heard this was brought up. That's really neat.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It passes. Thank you, Trent.
Okay, this next one's, the purpose of the amended agenda heading into this afternoon's meeting. Earlier today, the governing body went through its customary reorganization procedures. The published start time of the meeting on the agenda, however, was 1:00 p.m. Therefore, the actions are not official at this point. So the governing body is asked to formally ratify all of the elements of reorganization, which this morning, that was the selection of the chairperson, Esmer, Shannon Dick; the selection of the vice chairperson, who would have the title of Vice Mayor, Manny Ortiz; the designation of the commission following the rules of order that it currently follows, which is outlined in Division Two, Article Two of the Code of Ordinances; time and place of regular city commission meetings, which is 1:00 p.m. on the first and third Tuesday of each month; the city clerk and the city attorney being authorized to be seated at the bench with the city commission; and the Garden City Telegram being designated as the official city newspaper. Now, there were a lot of things that went on this morning. Those are the only ones that had votes. And so, I think by one motion and second, all of those things could happen and be official in discussions immediately after the pre-meeting when we, when we broke, City Attorney Cunningham was in agreeance that that was an appropriate solution. Now, subsequent to that, brought to my attention that the Vice Mayor appointment may have been off from what was anticipated. It turns out that's, that's true, and I visited with Commissioner Ortiz. He was very gracious in, in, in understanding that situation. However, that isn't easily resolved, and it turns out this morning, we would have had to take up this discussion, as it were, anyways. Some of you will remember, in February of 2019, Commissioner Dale resigned his seat with the city commission because he was moving out of town. The commission, according to statute, appointed his replacement, and that was Commissioner Dick. The, and although there was still three years approximately left on, on that term, the statute requires that position to be ran off at the earliest regularly scheduled election. Therefore, the fall of 2019 election had four seats open. The top two seats received four-year terms. The second two seats received two-year terms. That also put us in the situation where when his, his Vice Mayor/Mayor seat came up, everything kind of ratcheted up a year from what had been past practice, which was the commission has had the practice of, if you were elected to a four-year term, you would be mayor during your four-year, during your four-year term, but there would be a two-year delay for the top vote getter to be mayor, and then the, the second top vote getter would then, in the fourth year they were on, he or she was on, the commission would be mayor. That got ratcheted up because there was a vacancy in a four-year, four-year term. So, if we look at correcting my mistake of identifying who past practice would point to as the next Vice Mayor, it really points to two possible solutions. One, which would put the commission on, back on the two-year delay side of the kind of two-part past practice rule, would point to Commissioner Euler being the third top vote getter in the 2019 election. If the commission were to kind of emphasize or maybe give more credence to the must-be-selected-to-a-four-year-term piece, that would point to, to Commissioner Unruh, having been the top vote getter in this most recent election that happened in November. So, the, you know, the commission, again, as we talked about this morning, you could pick any of you except for Mayor Dick to be, to be Vice Mayor. The statutes don't force you to do, force you to do anything in past practice, it's simply that, it's just past practice. We have been off of past practice for the last year and, I guess it would be two and a half years. And so, there really isn't a close or a clear identification of who, who the appropriate person would be. So, given those two scenarios, I would, I would tell you if, if, if the commission's will is to have a cycle by which there would be a two-year delay from being the top vote getter to becoming mayor, that would point to Commissioner Euler. If it would be, be four-year terms only, be mayor, that would point to Commissioner My, my agenda item sheet says that we, that the staff's recommendation would be to ratify the reorganization actions as listed. I would probably take that back and say that, you know, at this point in time, we just frame the decision for you on Vice Mayor and tell you that we don't have a recommendation. And sorry for the awkwardness of it, but I think clearing it up now makes, makes sense.
I was gonna say, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, as I said, one of the key differences between the two methods that are kind of outlined as either traditional or just recent to kind of stopgap fill is the role of that third-place vote getter under the traditional still has a role as a mayor and Vice Mayor, whereas what it's only the top two vote getters, that third place never assumes any leadership role in the commission. So I just like the point, at least, at least that's what it'll look like on that rotation page there. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So, we need to take care of the Vice Mayor first before we ratify the, the, this item, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and I think since now this is all real good and messed up, that instead of the, instead of ratifying a list, just going through the exercise of doing this one at a time on each of the six.
That'll work.
That'll create a little bit of a burden for the city clerk to go make this, make the minutes for this meeting because of the way our agenda software works, but we'll...
We'll make it work.
Yeah, she'll take that out on me.
All right, so you wanted to start with number one?
Number, actually, no, go back to four.
So, on my, on this, on my background sheet, number one would be the selection of the chairperson.
Right.
But we already did that.
Mm-hmm.
So it's number four.
Number, number five.
You have not done...
We've not approved any of these officially.
You have to do them all. You haven't done any of these actions in a public meeting yet.
So we need to do number one.
So, I'll make, well, I can't make the motion because...
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, I can.
Well, can I? As, oh, okay. I make the motion, let me go back to my notes here. I make the motion that Commissioner Dick will be the chairperson of the city commission and serve as mayor.
Second.
All right, here, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, that passes, and I will go ahead and do my speech again.
It was good enough to listen to again. If you need to, yes.
So item two is the selection of Vice Chairperson. So do you feel like we need a second to discuss, or are we ready to, for nomination?
Well, I want to ask a question, and so, and I, you know, I think that's why I hesitated before, and I know Commissioner Euler and I were both hesitating because we knew, you know, that, how that was played out in the, in the past time when I was, when we were elected. And I just want to make sure, if we elect you as Vice Mayor, I mean, are you willing to assume that role? Or, I'm just, I mean, because again, it's something I didn't know, I mean, going off of, you know, in a two-year cycle, are you willing to assume that role? I mean, is that something that you would be willing to do? I mean, I feel bad that Rex wasn't able to be here, but I'm just saying, and you're, but I just want to make sure that that's something that you would be willing to do, or...
I would. As I look out, the chair of my board is in the audience too, of where I work, but, yeah, I would.
The chair gave you a thumbs up.
Okay.
Any other discussion, or...
I'll make a motion that Commissioner Euler be named Vice Chair, who shall assume the duties and title of Vice Mayor and serve as the Chairperson in the absence of Mayor.
I'll second. There's been a, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that passes. Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
And my apologies to the commission for the awkwardness of that.
All right, since there's no changes to three through six, is that possible to go through, or you just still would rather me do one at a time?
We'll just...
We'll do one at a time. All right, we're looking for...
I'll make a motion that we follow the, and conduct the meetings presently follows the Division Two, Article Two of the Code of Ordinances.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
The rules of order.
Commissioner Ortiz? All right, any discussion? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That passes. Item four, which is the place and time for the, right, the city commission meetings, at 1:00 p.m. on the first and third Tuesdays of each month.
I make the motion that we continue the current practice to hold the regular commission, city commission meetings on the first and third Tuesdays of each month at 1:00 in the city commission chambers.
Is there a second?
Second.
This could have been the chance that we could have changed that. I never thought about that.
Well, oh, now you...
It's too late.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, that passes.
You had the chance to say aye.
I know.
This is for the city clerk and city attorney, who can be seated at the bench during the city commission meetings.
Yeah, I move that we approve for the authorized personnel to be the city attorney and the city clerk to sit along with the commission on the bench.
Here's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead. He's got it.
Commissioner Ortiz. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that passes. And then finally, the Garden City Telegram as being designated as the official city newspaper.
Do we need to have the explanation all over? No, we're good.
I move to appoint the Garden City Telegram as designated as the official city newspaper.
Right, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that passes as well.
Thank you. Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the First Amendment to Development Plan for Sunflower Crossing Addition to Allow the Building of Homes Prior to the Acceptance of the Streets. Trent?
Welcome in. Okay, so the background on this item, the developer, Jared Torres, of Jet Properties LLC, has requested to begin building homes before acceptance of the street infrastructure of the governing body as required by the Garden City Division Regulation. The development plan for Sunflower Crossing is approved by the governing body on January 19, 2021. Staff has reviewed the request by the developer and would allow the homes to be built before the acceptance of street infrastructure with conditions laid out in Section Three Amendment to Section 3.4 of the Development Agreement. Construction of infrastructure approvals, the proposed First Amendment to Development Plan is attached. With that, so, there are several items of the infrastructure that would be required that would be laid out in that description, and so they won't be able to pull permits if approved to build and construct houses for the purpose of occupying the home that will need to be completion of those infrastructure parts. The alternatives, number one, the governing body may approve the First Amendment to the Development Plan for Sunflower Crossing Addition as proposed. Alternative number two, the governing body may approve the First Amendment to Development Plan for Sunflower Crossing with changes. And number three, the governing body may not approve the First Amendment to Development Plan for Sunflower Crossing Addition. Staff recommends alternative one. If you have any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the First Amendment to the Development Plan for Sunflower Crossing Addition to Allow the Building of Homes Prior to the Acceptance of the Streets.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Euler, seconds. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Trent.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the Police Citizens Advisory Board. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
If we would request, consider and approve an appointment to the PCAB, or Police Citizens Advisory Board. We currently have three vacant companies. One is at Asian American Social Services, and finally, the Religious Communities. We have an application for consideration from Father Tom Kirshen from St. Thomas Episcopal Church. If he was appointed, his term would expire in December of 2025, and our alternatives are appoint to Father Tom or do not appoint to Father Tom. The PCAB has met with Tom, and they recommend that we, we choose alternative number one for appointment of Father Tom.
All right. Do you want to come and tell us a little about yourself?
How much do you want to know?
As much as you want to give.
I'm also a college professor too, so I could talk a long time.
As long as there's no tests after.
I may bring a PowerPoint or something.
Good, good.
Grew up on a farm in Goddard, Kansas, or whatever. Sold my place about two and a half years ago and then moved into Cunningham, and then I was asked to work in the southwest part of Kansas as an Hispanic missionary. And so, I work here, and I also do the church at St. John's in Ulysses, also. So, and I've had a varied of experiences, as I've mentioned to them in my life, so...
All right.
Anything you want to ask me?
I think we're good.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Father Tom Kirshen to the fiddly vacant religious position with the expiring term in December of 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right, that passes. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Keep him busy. Keep him busy.
I taught business at the...
Hey, Chief.
Sir.
He said Asian, there were two other positions, Asian and social services. Okay.
Looks good.
All right. Thank you.
We can get the program. If you get perfect, you know you did a good picture.
All right. All right. Everyone smile on three. One, two, three. Looks good.
All right. Thank you.
We can get the program. If you get perfect, you know you did a good picture.
All right. All right. Everyone smile on three. One, two, three. Looks good.
All right. Thank you.
We can get the program. If you get perfect, you know you did a good picture.
All right. All right. Item D.
Yeah, item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve two appointments to the Planning Commission. Trent?
Okay, so we have our planning commission, we have nine-member board, and two are expiring for city representatives, representatives of home. Gina Anlecker, her current term as city representative expired December 31, 2021. She has expressed interest in completing the second term and serving again. The terms are set to expire December 31, 2024. The following citizens, in no particular order, have also expressed interest in serving on the commission. I'll hopefully pronounce these right, Sean Collins, Kenneth Rochelle, Isidro Moreno, Michael Cook, Roy Earl Dixley. And we had two that we handed out at the beginning of the meeting that came in after the packets were created. Individuals that also have expressed interest to serve, we have Renamo Lisa and Liz Morgan. And if you reference their application, Renamo, specifically for the planning commission, Liz Morgan expressed interest in multiple boards. With that, the planning commission met on Thursday, December 16, 2021, and recommended the reappointment of Gina Anlecker and either Sean Collins or Michael Cook to fill the vacancy. Alternatives, number one, the governing body may adjourn Gina Anlecker for second term, and another citizen from the above listed. Alternatives, number two, the governing body may appoint two citizens from the above listed, and alternatives, the governing body may leave vacancies, so the second citizen serving on the planning mission. Staff recommendation, longer working.
All right. Any questions, or entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to appoint Sean Collins and Michael Cook to fill those positions.
All right, is there a second?
Not Gina.
Not with a motion.
Hearing no second, is there a, a different, uh, motion to make?
I move to approve Gina Anlecker for a second term and Sean Collins, um, to fill the vacancy.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second to appoint Gina Anlecker and Sean Collins. Any discussion?
I'd just like to note that there's, I mean, it's great to see a number of people put in applications for these positions, it's great and even to see those on the next agenda item coming up, so, um, thank you for those applicants that have put in there.
Very good. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve filling two expiring terms on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Trent?
All right, so we have a five-member board and we have two expired terms. Uh, the following citizens also in no particular order have expressed interest in serving on the boards and on the appeals. And Isidro Moreno, Roy Earl Dixon, and Kenneth Richel. Again, I hope I pronounced my names correctly. The alternatives, number one, the governing body may appoint two citizens from the list listed. Alternative number two, the governing body may appoint one citizen from the list of our leave of vacancy and solicitude interest in serving on the Garden City Board of Zoning Appeals. Alternative number three, the governing body may leave a vacancy and solicitude interest in serving on the Garden City Board of Zoning, staff recommendations, alternative number one.
All right, any questions?
I move that we appoint Isidro Moreno and Ken Richel to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
All right, there's a motion for Isidro Moreno and Ken Richel, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Ortiz, seconds. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you.
We're now at the consent agenda, there's, I believe, two items on the consent agenda, so appropriate motion would be the approval of items F1 and 2, unless you want to pull one of them off.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items F1 and 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. I think that wraps it up, so we are on to the city commissioner reports and I am sure Commissioner Sessa has waited a year to be able to go first, so I'm proud to let Commissioner go first.
Yeah. Um, just want to congratulate, um, Mayor Dick on being appointed into the position. You'll do a great job serving as mayor. I'd also like to congratulate Commissioner Euler, who is being appointed as, uh, vice mayor. Um, I really stated everything I had to state in my, in my address, you know, we live in a great community and, um, like Commissioner Ortiz said and a number of the others have noted, even in my, uh, speech, it's people that are serving on the advisory boards and on committees that really do help, uh, not only the community move forward, but help us make decisions in moving our community forward. So, uh, thank you for serving on those advisory boards and, um, other committees in our community. That's all I've got.
All right, Commissioner Ortiz?
Yeah. Um, yeah, congratulations, uh, mayor and vice mayor. Um, I know there was some, whatever was going on with, whatever you want to call it, but, uh, no embarrassment or anything on my part at all. It's, it was one of those where, uh, we needed to get it right and we needed to address it, so it's, it's, it's great that we were able to come together as a group and decide those, uh, big decisions like this and we look forward to this year coming and the next. Um, we did, uh, as heard, we heard from, uh, mayor and, and past mayor about the great, uh, progress that we have in Garden City over the last couple of years and, and yeah, we, we have a lot, lot more coming, so, um, it's great to be in Garden City. Um, I just love to express that, uh, everybody is doing well and that, you know, we are getting along and we're sharing love and we're sharing, um, fellowship with each other and, and it's great to just be, uh, a part of the city commission on any level, so thanks to all the staff that, for all the accomplishments and those who have, um, come on and for those who have actually moved on to either retirement or another position, so we thanks for all of their experience in the past history, so, thank you.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Euler.
My comments have changed a little bit. Congratulations to our new mayor and thank you, Commissioner Sessna, for everything you've done as mayor in the past as well. And also, I just want to echo what Commissioner Ortiz said in the fact that, you know, sometimes having these discussions up here in the public, being recorded with a hot microphone, can be a little intimidating and I do appreciate the fact that we can have those discussions and then we can walk out of here and still, you know, be our own and, and still get along and so thank you so much for doing that and also for trusting me to be your vice mayor next year. Um, I just wanted to say thank you also to the street department and all the departments, especially out at the airport, who worked during, um, the latest bass, blast of weather that we had last week, our little, little snowstorm that we had. I know that a lot of times we, you know, when we're in the comfort of our homes, we have people who are out overnight working to make sure that, that we're safe, so thank you for everything that, that you guys did. Um, also, I just wanted to echo that, um, the city has three grant deadlines coming up on January 14th for the AFAT grant, the community grant and the arts grant, and, um, those are due at four o'clock, so if you want to apply, you can go on to either the city's Facebook page or, um, the city's website, but then also, uh, through the Department of Children and Families, uh, the time to apply for LEAP, the Low Income Energy Assistance Program, is now, um, so if you qualify for that program, then there's also a program to qualify for emergency water assistance through DCF as well. And so if you find that you qualify, um, make sure you go ahead and, and apply for that because there are deadlines as well, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Unruh.
So I just want to say thank you, uh, Mayor Sessna and for your leadership last year, we had a really, it was a really great year. And as far as, as the numbers, as, I'm going to, Mayor, I'm going to work harder to be more, pepper my comments with more statistics this year.
It keeps people awake.
In honor of you, so. But no, I just really appreciate, you know, everything that happened in 2021, we're looking forward to 2022 and we're excited about, um, not only your past leadership, but also your leadership coming up. Um, thank you for your graciousness, um, Commissioner Ortiz, I mean, that was, uh, it was a difficult situation to work through, but I'm really excited about that and excited about our new vice mayor. Um, and, uh, I'm looking forward to, when Rex hears about this, I wish I could be there when he hears about it.
Oh, yeah.
I, I do also want to echo the thanks to, especially to our police and fire and EMS, you know, and also everyone who works at the hospital. A lot of us, um, have the, the luxury of having some days off and some time off during the holidays and these people work around the clock, I mean, you can hear sirens going off and you can hear, I know that the emergency room has been especially, especially busy and, you know, there's been a lot of things happening at the hospital and these people work around the clock when you talk about, and there's a lot of, this, holidays are really hard times of the year, so, um, I really appreciate them taking care of all of that so that we can enjoy our families and enjoy our friends and also enjoy our community. Um, I know for, many people are back home and traveling, I'm excited about schools starting back up for all of the students, I just wanted to mention that because I know they're not, but, um, but I, you know, I, I really have enjoyed the, the time off, I just want to make sure, wish everyone a happy new year, couldn't believe it came so quickly, it seemed, it seemed to happen really fast, but of course, that could be an age thing, so I'm not really sure at this point. Um, I'm really excited about this upcoming year, I think, not only about the new, there's so many great things that are going to be happening, the new terminal, the second season of our, um, of Garden Rapids at the Big Pool, I, I don't know why I'm so excited about it, I just, last year was kind of the dry run and this year, you know, I think it's just, we're going to blow it out of the water again, so there's lots to look forward in 2022. Make sure you pay attention to our Facebook page, we have, our communications team does an incredible job of letting you know what's going on, so newspaper or no newspaper, I mean, if you don't know what's going on at the city, then, um, you need to like us on Facebook because it's really important, all the things that are happening. I also want to emphasize the shopping local, it is, um, it is a lot of fun to go out and shop, um, locally here and there are some really great after Christmas sales, um, I'm not saying this because I don't want my wife to go out, but I mean, I've been out a couple of times, but I'll tell you, the retailers in our area, they are really stepping up their game. Uh, they have really, um, made it, made us all feel welcome and so I, you know, I love shopping in Garden City and so just to remind you that, again, this is a really great time to purchase things for next Christmas, so, and that will come on December 25th, 2022, so. I just want to say thank you again to this commission, I'm excited about working with all of us this year and thank you for the staff and for helping us work through all of the things that we need to take care of, so with that, I'm done.
All right. So, uh, first thing, I think we should congratulate the, the people who were just re-elected, Commissioner Euler and Ortiz and Unruh, uh, for being, uh, re-elected to the commission, so congratulations to them. Um, also thank you again, um, former Mayor Sessna, for all that you've done for our community and setting the example of, uh, what a, a mayor should do and does do, especially when they do it a good job, um, so thank you and, and, um, congratulations on your, on your being able to sit off to the side and not have to talk as much during these meetings. And then, uh, congratulations, um, Vice Mayor Euler on your appointment as well. Um, a lot of people talk to me and, and say that, that, that Garden City is such a good place and, and it's, that we do such a good job as commissioners and mayor and stuff like that, but, um, when we're on this side, we know that this really only works because of the work our staff does, um, from city manager on down to everybody, so, uh, thank you for everybody who works for the city. We truly have really good staff from interns all the way through our, our seasoned veterans, um, it really does make our city work and I don't think that people in town realize how much of what works in Garden City is because of the city staff. So thank you for all you've done in 2021 and, and the previous thing we just did, ten, twenty, thirty years service of work, so thank you for everybody who, who makes it all work. And like Commissioner Unruh said, um, uh, 2022 is going to be a great year, I mean, we just came off an amazing year in 2021, but looking at what's coming down the pike on 2022, it's probably going to be a banner year. And again, that's not because of me, that's because of what everybody else does, so with that, I'll.
One other thing, I'd just like to welcome, uh, Jennifer Cunningham.
Yes.
To the bench for first meeting as city attorney, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Good point, good point. All right, we'll see you in a couple weeks.